All right, microphones on. Cell phones silenced. All right, I'll start while you guys are finishing up. It's Friday, October 26, 2018. It's 1:11 PM. And this is a budget work session of the Marquette Township Board to discuss public works. It's kind of a carryover from Wednesday's meeting, which is also a work session. And you hear rattling in the background that some pages that are being replaced in the budget book based on what was discussed in Wednesday's meeting. I want to apologize to the Board for not being here on time. I was late with -- it's been a week of meetings that have been way too long, so I'm sorry. But I did listen to the meeting. You guys had great discussion. Some of the questions I could have answered early on had I been here, but that's my problem, my mistake. So, you do have a spreadsheet that Lois put together and then another one that Kirk provided. And I did up change the water improvements and the wastewater improvements, CIP, spreadsheets to be just what you had pretty much done a consensus on what we want to have for the 19 budget. So in the water section, it's going to be the ATS with generator and the PLC update. And then on the wastewater side, it's just the generator. So I gave you that updated spreadsheet in case you wanted to see those numbers. And on the bottom of each of those sheets, Lois has the unrestricted retained earnings total through '17. If you look at that first column that has the numbers in it for 2017. That ties in to her other spreadsheet, the bigger one, that has wastewater on top and water on the bottom. And she's got a culmination of financial statement numbers from December of '17 through September of this year. So as an example, if you look at your water improvements spreadsheet, the little one that just shows the generator and the PLC, there's $115,740 in retained earnings that we can use, and it's on the second spreadsheet on the bottom. It's the first item underwater for 123117. Okay? So that's that number, so you can make the correlation. So when Lois -- and stop me, or she's gone already. I was going to say, stop me if I misunderstand this, but in January of '18, we're still looking at the water improvement account, when she balanced the month, that 85, sort of $85,000 that was in retained earnings went into the retained earnings for January. And now you've got $200,000 there. So when she ended the February month, we had another $16,000 that went in there. Are you following me so far? So at the end of September, we now have, in the water, unrestricted retained earnings, $289,548. Okay? Are you with me so far?
No, but I'm getting my questions organized.
Okay, that's fair.
So that's what we're building, right? That's what we're building?
Yes. This is what we have available. And Kirk, you can stop me if I'm misspeaking, but this is the way she explained it to me, the way I understood it. So on the wastewater side, it's the same thing. We've got 1.8 in there. We knew that was a higher account anyway. So if you look at that sheet, you've got 1.483, which is the total ending 123117. And after each month, when she does her balance, that's what's going into retained earnings. So we got $400,000 that dumped into wastewater in the last nine months. Okay? So we'll start with that. So one of the questions from Wednesday was whether or not we are going to start in the beginning with our CIP accounts and put a number in there. And yes, that's what we're going to do. Go ahead.
Actually, the question from Wednesday that I had that didn't really get answered was, in the water improvements, for example, we're showing $115,740.
Yes.
The question was, how much of that is capital improvement projects? How much is contingency?
Contingency is on the budget.
I understand that.
Each month. We don't have numbers on this yet. That's what we're trying to establish.
All right, then what is the $115,740 split between?
It's nothing. It's put in there.
Just laying there.
Yes, because there was no -- and Lois, what I'm explaining, just stop me if I'm misunderstanding, okay? Just yell at me. We're looking at your main spreadsheet here that you just did, the big one. And I showed them the connection between the smaller ones. Okay? So that's where we are. And Dave's question is, let's see, which one did you look at? The $115,000?
I was looking at the water, $115,740.
On the water for the December ending 2017, it's got $115,740 in there. And Dave's question is, what of that money is CIP or?
Whatever.
Whatever. And I said, we don't know. It's just in there, correct?
Yeah, that's a management decision.
To be determined.
Where to put that.
Right. So my intent, my hope is that we will take, in this water account, we've got $289 now that's sitting in there. It's not expended. It's not accounted for. There's nothing tied to that. My -- bless you. My hope is that we can take that and put it, I'm guessing, we can put the whole thing on these two projects, give them a cost center number or a chart of accounts number, and go forward. Or we can maybe say, all right, if we only need $60,000, let's just do the generator this year and get it over with and take it out of that $289. And we can do the PLC upgrade. Let's just do it, take it out of that, and then we have $179,000 left that we can apportion however we want.
But the Board's decision, and it may, it's not this Board, but the Board previous established they would like a three-month operating reserve.
Right, that's next on my list.
Yeah.
Well, that's where we have to come from.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to establish.
What amount is that?
I'm just throwing out.
No, no, how much is that?
How this can be done?
Three months.
That's a Kirk question or a Lois question?
What's the three months of operating?
Operating.
Well, we have to.
For water.
Get the budget.
You'd have to average that, yeah.
Well, okay, three months.
Ballpark?
Yeah.
Can you, you know, what do you think, for a month? Is it like $20,000 or 150 or 600,000 or?
Three months.
I'm just saying, what kind of a number?
Three months of running the water, wastewater, solid waste.
Yep.
Stormwater.
But if we're looking at water?
Well, no.
You have to add.
Well.
No, you've got three months of operating for public works, not for water, not for stormwater.
I understand.
All of public works.
Yeah, but we were just talking about water. So I was trying to make a correlation between the $289,000 and how much of that should be part of that or not.
But it's not even from water.
I know that.
Water to solid waste.
I know that.
So apportioning it is going to have to be predicated upon, if nothing else, your 2017 year-ending budget. Or you're, take your three-quarter ending '18 budget, you know, add them all up and take.
Divided by three.
Three-twelve, so each of them.
Okay, right. So let me back up.
But the point is, it's a public works cushion.
Correct. Well, it's not even a cushion. It's operating in case.
Follow what you want.
Well, the issue with public works is it's not tax-funded. It's user-funded. So there is no revenue coming from property taxes or from anything else. It's strictly from users. That's how it's funded.
Okay, so.
And we don't know what three months operating is for public work?
Well, we get it right now. Yeah, we've got the budget in front of us. We can take, you know, we've got, you know, Lois can give us what the closing at September 30th is, and there's nine months' worth of it right there. But if you want to go back and look at 2017 year-end, you use as a guide, three-twelves of that total figure.
I just thought she might know. And I figured if we just took it as.
Now, I know what it is for general fund, but I don't know what it is for public works because it varies.
If we just start with one account, it's a little easier to grasp than trying to do the whole thing. We have funds in each one of these accounts. We can't say we're going to have to take a part of -- here are our decisions to make. We have CIP projects that need to be funded. We have available funds to do that. Or we take a percentage of that and partially fund those, or we take some of the money and put it toward that three-month contingency that we need, or we take a percentage of that. You guys, again, didn't give me a chance to get into my whole explanation. What I was trying to do is give you ideas on how I see that money funding what we have to do because you got it down from $300,000 to $110.
As a ballpark, based on estimated 2018 year-end, three months operating for the water funds is $193,833. That's three months operating.
Thank you.
Well, what do we have so far? Nothing?
We have $289,000, if you want to use it all.
That's for public works.
Water.
No, that's.
Right.
So you've got a little less than $100,000.
So we could take $193,000 out of there and set it aside and say that's our, whatever you want to call it, contingency or.
Three months operating.
Capture or whatever, whatever title you want to give. And we can set it aside and not touch it. And then have the other $100,000 to either do these two projects or do one of them or fund them or whatever. Do you see the scope? You've got to look at the big picture. This is water because wastewater's numbers are different.
Yes.
So if you try to do this as a, let's have three months operating for the whole department or the whole utility, it's more difficult when we're working with different numbers.
And you can't interchange the funds.
Right.
That's the problem.
Right. Stormwater's going to be different. So if we start with water yesterday.
Since you're thinking about retaining funds for an emergency in that, when you're talking about enterprise fund, you have dollars coming in every month. It's not taxes or anything else. What would cause the flow of that money to be interrupted so we didn't have it?
Government problems? Is that what you're talking about?
A major disaster in the area. People couldn't pay their bills.
Power outages, any number of things. Storms, any number of things, regardless of whether we've got money coming in or not, we still have to operate the system.
I understand. I'm just trying, in my mind.
Downturn in the economy, massive layoff. We Energies closes, CCI closes, people don't have jobs, they quit paying their bills.
Okay. I just, I had to get something in my mind as to some of the things.
Those are the kinds of things that your auditors are telling you. You need to have three to four months of reserve capacity to operate.
And our Board set that up, like five, six years ago.
I know that. I'm just looking down the line. If someone asks a question, why do you have this? How do you explain it to them?
And this is not a contingency fund either. It's whatever name you want to call it. This is our reserve.
We have to decide what we want to call it because we're batting names around, and I think we get them all mixed up. Contingency funds got nothing to do with this.
Right.
It's reserve operations.
I think the manager keep referring to it as three months operating.
Reserve operations.
Reserve operations is correct.
That's a good.
And that's as good of a title for anything as operation reserves.
Yeah, operation reserves.
And it's for emergency purposes.
Yep. Not the contingency type where we want to take from it.
That's different.
And this doesn't mean that this is restricted, that we can't use it. It just means that that's our intent, is to put it somewhere and not touch it in case of an emergency, a disaster of some kind.
Okay, so we're calling those operation reserve funds.
Yeah. Is that good? Is that clear?
Yeah, I buy it.
All right. So if we look at water and we say, this is the next part of the discussion, do we want to, what do we want to do? Do we want to take that whole $289,000, pull out the reserve and know that water's taken care of, and then figure out what we want to do with the rest of it? Or do you want to take half of it and set it aside or a third or? What are you thinking?
And your question's going to be, what is the percentage?
If you want to do a percentage.
No, I mean.
Okay. Now that you've gotten that far.
Yes.
You're off the digit. Three months operating for water, 355, 361.
I thought that was.
$118,000 of that water or wastewater?
Water.
$118,000 a month for water.
Three months total, okay.
Three months for water is 355, 361.
355, whoops.
It's $118,000 for three months?
Per month.
Per month.
Three months is 355,000, 361, round numbers.
So we're still short the three months.
That's based on the estimated 2018 year-end.
Okay. So now we have less with no balance. So we could.
Which is the result of the abandoned boom of the water project.
Yes, yes.
Did you do wastewater yet?
No, we won't deal with wastewater.
Yeah, let's just stick with water first. It's easier to keep them separate.
I've got this page open. Do you have any to go later?
Stick a pen in there. All right, so if we start with this, again, my premise is that we figure out what we want to do with the operations. We figure out what percentage or what dollar number we want to put toward 2019 projects, those two in the water department, there's only two that you narrowed it down to. And then we give them account numbers and we leave them there. So, again.
Okay, so we can't make any decision right today's meeting anyway, but the only thing underwater is the generator and the PLC upgrade. And the other one we haven't talked about yet is the.
Motor control.
Motor control upgrade.
Yeah, we took that off, so.
Oh, we didn't take it off. We just want more information.
Right. So I did this based on what you had pretty much said you wanted to do.
We could talk about motor control before we make our decision.
No, no, no. Let's figure out how we're going to structure this because then when we get to wastewater and stormwater, we can do the same thing. We can look at it in the same light. If you try to do the whole thing at once, it's just, I think it's too difficult because the numbers are different. So if you want to go to wastewater and just leave this and figure, we don't have, if we come up with a plan, we can implement it on each department. I think that's easier. And maybe the percentages are different. Based on, wastewater's got a lot more money left over. We've got more projects to do. So maybe we take a third of this and put it in each department. Maybe in wastewater, we do a half, you know? So let's stick with one, okay? So from the water side, if we need $355,000 to cover just our reserves, and we only have $289,000 to use, and we want to spend $110,000 this year. Okay, that's not projected cost. Okay, Kirk, that doesn't make sense. If the projected cost is $60,000.
The generator should be 60, uh, let's see, that's $60,000, yeah, the generator.
Yeah. But you're saying, are you saying that the $120,000, or maybe Lois put this in, is the $120,000 as of December of '17 what's been accumulated? Is that what you're saying? We only need $60,000 to do the project?
No, that's not what's accumulated. That's what was through 10 years of budgets or whatever.
Okay.
Was budgeted.
Okay. So what do we need for the generator? We only need 60, correct?
Well, that's a more recent estimate.
Right, okay. So for this year, our projected cost of those two items to do, the generator and the upgrade, we need $110,000. If you wanted to do those projects tomorrow and you wanted me to write a check, that's what we need, right?
Well, the PLCs.
Yes, and the generator.
That's, I was going to do, I was going to do that, like $10,000 a year.
But.
Not the whole shot.
Answer my question, just so I know what numbers are right.
What's your question? I'm sorry.
If I was going to write you a check today to do both of these projects, the generator and the PLC, it would be $110,000.
It'd be $70,000.
Pardon?
$70,000.
No, no, it'd be.
No, for both of them.
The whole project.
For the generators and the PLC.
These two right here.
It's a complete, both projects.
Yes.
Well, yeah, if you want to be that sure.
I'm just saying, so $110,000 is the number we'd need, right? Okay, give or take. I don't mean exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. So if we have $289,000 to use, we know we need 355 for reserve operations, do we give them the $110,000 out of that and put the remainder in reserve? We could do that because he's saying that these, based on your discussion, that these need to be done probably this year, right? Go ahead, Dave.
I don't know why you want to front the money for all of these.
I'm just asking. That's an option.
This is my, this is my idea.
You're, okay.
If the, the two that have been approved in the water is the generator and the PLC upgrade, and there's $70,000 worth of funding for this year.
For '19.
Okay? If we get past the motor control center and decide to fund that, that brings the whole funding up for this year to $98,000 is what the funding is.
Okay.
Now, I assume that's what drives the base rate increase and the volume rate increase is the contingency.
Because it's so big, sure.
True? So if you elected to fund those upfront, then it should push those rates back to last year's rates. True?
Probably.
Close.
Yeah, could be.
Well, why would you?
I'm not saying you would. I'm just saying that if you decided to do that, that, but if you left the budget the way it is with the 10-cent increase in volume rate and the dollar increase in base rate, those three would be funded at the level that has been requested, and it wouldn't take any of that $115 or that $289,548.
You wouldn't take any of that.
Wouldn't take any of that.
That's correct, yep.
So you could leave that.
Yep.
In the.
Operation reserve.
Wait, wait, operation reserve.
Yep.
So, I mean, I would think that's our option. We can either do that or we can fund those three items upfront for this year, and the rates, the base rate and the volume rate would go back to the 2018 or 2018 levels.
Okay. Did I misunderstand your discussion that you only want to fund these then and not do them in '19?
That wasn't requested to do them in '19. The only one that was requested to do it in '19 was the generator.
Okay, I did kind of misunderstand that part then.
No, Kirk's.
So the upgrade we're going to have to do, this is the machine that just broke down, right? There's coming Monday to fix?
The PLC.
Right.
No, that's.
Oh, it's not? Okay. That's where I got confused then.
You don't need to do the whole system at once.
Okay.
It's an overtime thing.
Well, hey, okay, right now, in front of you, as part of the budget, is $60,000 set aside for the generator.
Okay.
Okay. If we in fact spend that $60,000, that's not going to impact, you know, the rates.
If we spend it on the generator?
Yeah, it doesn't matter if it's sitting there or if we spend it.
Right.
Okay? That's not going to change the rates.
Okay.
For the quality rate.
It would impact next year's rates.
Yes.
Because then you wouldn't have that $60,000 to fund.
To fund. It'd be done. It would impact them because they.
If you took some of this, if you took some of this $289,548 out to fund that upfront, then you would.
Correct.
No, he's saying the 60's already in the budget to fund it.
Right.
So next year, we won't have to budget that amount, so we'd, that's how it would affect the rates because.
The rates would be less.
They'd be less.
It's built into the rate in this budget.
Correct, right now.
Correct.
So I'd leave it in.
So if we do it this year, then we still don't have to fund it next year because it's all funded this year.
Right.
Correct.
But.
It's a one-year funding.
Right, so then he can do it next year. He'd get the generator next year. We don't have to fund it next, in '19, we won't have to fund it for '20.
So we just, if you can't do it this year because the funds aren't physically here yet.
We can. He said he budgeted.
Yeah, he's budgeted to have it done.
To have it done already. So it really doesn't need to be, he's listing it on here as a CIP item because it's a huge budget item. That's what he always said. He made his CIP request because of the size of the request, the size of the project.
So inasmuch as the capital improvement program request for the, for the generators is going to be approved, then he's already got the money, just go ahead and do it.
Correct.
Yep, it's in the budget already.
If it's approved.
Based on.
Number approved, and it comes out.
And then the rates change.
It's in the 2019 budget already.
Correct.
Okay. And if I look back to what I was saying before, if we just leave the water budget as is, the rate increases as they've been proposed would stay as is.
Right.
And will cover that.
And we would fund everything that is scheduled there to be funded.
And we don't really need to add this on again.
You're, to clarify, what Dave was saying is right. The pages you just received reflect the actions you took on Wednesday.
How does it account for the motor control thing? Is it in there? Or am I saying?
It's there, it's there now for discussion at this meeting. We did not take it out because you wanted additional information.
Okay.
We provided it for this meeting. But the generator is built into the rates and into the budget sheets that you now have in your books, the ones that were passed out today.
As of today, yes.
Is that a little clearer?
It was clear before. I'm just.
Yeah, so everybody understands that if you want to go forward with the generator in '19, the budget already does that, as proposed. There won't be nothing in there for generator for '20.
And I don't like taking anything out of this $289,000 because we're really not at a three-month buildup. It's just bad budgeting to start taking out. A good example is insurance premiums that were paid over the year or not paid and all this other stuff that's going on with about township. It's the same principle. We start robbing from this thing, and we're going to end up in trouble sometime.
Right now, that $289 that's in there gives you a little, right around two, a little more than two months.
Right, you need 355.
Protection.
You need three fifty-five, three sixty-one, and you're not there yet, so I don't think we should take anything out of there until we achieve that.
You got about two months worth of reserve.
Yeah.
So what we can budget then is either this year, when I say this year, I mean in nineteen, because that's what we're working on, we can budget the difference between the three fifty-five and the two eighty-nine, or we can just wait and see what happens with the balance even next month, that might bump it up, and have her make sure that the reserve, whatever she was gonna put to retained earnings at the end of October, can go into the reserve operations account.
You're going, you're going to see, uh, the trend, you know, that has been documented over the, the sheets that, that Wes and Lois put together, you're gonna see that trend continuing for the rest of this year, because we have activity occurring, we have buildings being built, and, you know, the fees coming in and those kinds of things, you're gonna see there, by the end of the year, it may be a little higher than what it currently is, I mean, you know, on that same trend line, because we still have activity occurring that will bring revenue in for the last
Some months, you're making forty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, then you go up to sixty, seventy thousand, so what's gonna happen year-end, you know?
I, I would suggest that we leave the hundred and fifteen, seven forty, in the operation reserve, and leave the water budget where it is.
No, you're, you're looking at two eighty-nine, that was at the end of twenty seventeen.
Yeah, it's not two eighty-nine, it's in there now.
I would suggest we leave it where it is.
Yep.
Leave it not where it is, earmark it for operation reserve.
What's the increases?
That's as of right now, what we're talking about is next year's budget.
I understand.
So there'll be three more months.
We'll see where it is.
We'll get it next time.
Yep.
We're not there anyway, and then, you know, we're gonna fund the other ones, because he's already guys funded.
You're gonna have adjustments, you're gonna have adjustments for October year-end, year, month-end, November's month-end, and December's month-end, you got three more, three more months of month-ends to go with that two eighty, or two eighty-nine, and we are, you have projects that are actively trying to wrap up between now and the end of the year.
The other part of this
Before tax time.
The other part that you have to remember though, what we wanted to try to do, what we said we wanted to do, was how can I say this? It kinda um, let's say at the end of the year, we've got five hundred thousand, okay, the two eighty-nine gets bumped up, I'm just picking a number, it's five hundred thousand, because it's a nice even number, and we only need the three fifty-five, so we've got that funded, then we have hundred and fifty thousand left, and the point of that money then was to determine how much we wanted to put on the projects that have to be funded, that are not in the budget.
Or to pay down debt.
Right. Okay?
That's important.
So, and that's, that's what I was trying to explain in the beginning, is how we have to determine what happens to this money, it's not just this going to the reserve operations, it has to be used to help fund the projects going forward, because we don't want this to just sit, and that's what happened, you know, ten years ago, that was the start of the discussion, we had seven hundred thousand sitting there, and it was just sitting there, it was not budgeted, or earmarked, or it was just sitting there, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
I would think that after that operation reserve reaches its magic three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, that when that happens, then we consider what else we want to do.
Right, I just want you to understand
Funds a C I P request early, fine, if you want to pay down debt early, fine, but I would deal with that when it comes up, knowing that the threshold is three fifty-five, three sixty-one.
Right, and that should be a decision that you should be making in late January or early February, but after we close out the year, give you an accurate picture after everything's been paid, and all the receipts are in, uh, in terms of what you actually have to work with, and then make a determination as to whether you want to pay down some principal, or whether you, you know, you get rid of some, uh, interest, or to pre-fund what you think your next capital improvement project will be.
But I think what we're talking about for this part is to leave the two eighty-nine, five forty-eight in operation reserve.
Mm-hmm.
To leave the water budget as it's put before us, and the only thing we have left to deal with is the motor control center.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay.
If we decide not to put that in, or to leave it in, that will affect the budget to some extent.
It will, and also if you decide to move it to a two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two project, rather than a nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, so those are all options.
It would adjust the, the base rate in the utility bills, and it would adjust the volume rate in the utility bill for this year, for twenty nineteen.
It'd fairly small impact, it's only twenty-eight thousand dollars, something, a relatively small impact, but yes, it would.
But by Board action, we, we said we want three months, and so I, I just don't want to rethink this whole thing and try to do it, because we're not at our goal for three months, so, until we get there, then we can start doing other things with it.
So it would make sense
We're trying to rethink the whole thing, and I don't think we have to.
No, we just need to make sure we understand what our goal is for this money.
I think that's a solid process.
And that's, that's all I was trying to establish, so I'm thinking we need to make sure that the reserve operations money has its own account number, so we can look at the budget at any time and say, this is the three fifty-five we've got, maybe at some point we wanna even it out, make it three sixty, or, you know, add another month, maybe, in a future date, but we, it's identified, okay?
Well, you could, you could relatively easily, year to year, identify what that three-month reserve needs to be, and whatever.
What it needs to be, because it could change.
You know, and it, it could go, go up, it could go down, depending on, you know, what
You could put the gold thread on top of the water, wastewater, and then see how you are, month to month.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just gonna have an account designated operational reserve?
All Lois has to do is change unrestricted retained earnings to operations reserve, that's all.
Well, I, I have a comment, suggestion. Uh, I agree with the concept, but I think the numbers that you're talking about now, it's like, three months of the whole budget? Okay, in my opinion, operations is operations, if that's the intent of the reserve, so in other words, you don't want to, you've already got debt reserve.
Gotcha, yep.
And replacement and improvement, now you want to have that, uh,
It doesn't need, yeah, you're right, so three fifty-five is fine.
I gotta fund another three months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna raise the rates.
Yeah, okay, well, as long as we understand the concept.
Run that by me again.
Yeah.
What, what he's saying is, is not everything, I was using the gross budget amount, uh, expense amount, and some of that is already reserved, so you need to pick out those aspects of the budget that are actually operations, which benefits, uh, you know, the, the operations of the system, uh, you can pull out those things that are already reserved.
So we need a true number, exactly.
Yeah.
You need to
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
We'll get that number.
I think we're at a close, we're at the cusp
Yeah.
Of deciding whether to leave the two eighty-nine where it is, if there's consensus, let's do it.
Yep.
I, I think it's okay.
Let's take a roll.
No, I, I think, I think we're good.
Yeah, I think that's, I think the consensus is that we're there.
Okay.
Yep.
But we have to also, going back to what Kurt says.
We need a true number.
Other thing buried, and we have to be aware of.
Yeah.
We just need a true number on top of water, wastewater, what's, what's that number we need, knowing that he got operational, you know, expenses, that's not part of that goal.
No, and, and what we don't know for sure, we'll deal with later.
Right.
In January.
We're, we're, we're being careful now about making sure that that doesn't get lost.
Yeah.
Yep, it's not gonna just go and fund somewhere.
That's the bottom line.
Exactly, that's all I was trying to get to.
The concept we have.
Good, so the whole idea is for right now through the end of the year, for Lois's purposes, the unrestricted retained earnings is going to go into a reserve operations account for water, wastewater, and, and, um, not solid waste, wastewater and stormwater, the concept, and we can, we'll look at wastewater next. So we can make sure this is what we want to do, but that's for right now, that's the idea, and we need a number for water, wastewater, and stormwater.
And solid waste.
Yeah, and solid waste, sure, of what operations total is, and we want to be able to
Three departments.
We want to be able to identify that at some point, and it will change, but if we've got, what do you want to use, do you want to take a year and divide it out, make, and make that three years?
Like a three-year, three-year average.
Okay.
Then I'll get your highs and lows.
I'd be happy if the managers just gave us an accurate count.
But it's gonna change every month, well, maybe not every month.
It won't change every month.
Well, lots of years should be
Lots of years change.
So take three years.
So as, yeah, just real quick, taking out the things with depreciation, replacement, improvement, contingency, those things are already booked, it makes the number, the three-month number, two eighty-three, four eleven, right in that number, but Kurt can give you an exact figure, but it's gonna be right in that ballpark, two eighty-three, four eleven.
That's wastewater.
That's water.
Water, okay.
For, uh, three months.
Okay.
So that would be already there. That would mean you're there.
And that's fine, she can just keep building that until we decide in January what we want to do with the difference, we'll have an exact number.
But again, that's a rough number off of this one sheet, so you can go through and identify, uh, debt service is still in there, so it's gonna, you know, we've gotta pull those things out that are already set aside.
Yep.
I'm gonna give you that number, but it's gonna
Is that clear, Smud? Okay, as long as we have the concept.
Two fifty to two eighty range is where it's gonna be.
Yes, go ahead, somebody
So we're talking about the two projects, C I P projects, moving forward on, am I understanding that?
Yes, we have, we have yet to determine the third one.
Yep, motor control.
Yes, we can do that, do you want to stay on water and do motor control, or do you want to keep our thought process and go to the other accounts?
Like the rest of the water.
Water, okay, that's fine.
I have some questions too.
You're asking that part of the wastewater.
You want to keep funding it.
Was it twice.
Right, we're gonna build you a brief watch.
What, for, for a moment, what we're getting is a handle
Yes.
on these things, it doesn't keep us from necessarily looking at an emergency and moving, we have that, we have that right.
Yes.
We have that, we can do that if we want, the difference is, what's being achieved is we're getting a, a notice and a, a handle on when that happens.
Yep.
That's different.
And when, if, should we choose to move money
Yeah.
because of some emergency, it's gonna be in, posted as a negative, saying that it was transferred out
But it'll be, it'll all be done with more notice, or tracking.
More precision, it'll be identified a whole lot better.
That's, that's what we're achieving.
Good.
I have some
Okay, so you want to stay on water, that's fine.
I have a question, so what we're looking at is, is right now, under the sales, on the, the rate is going to twelve-seven-seven from eleven-eighty-three, is that what we're talking about right now then?
Not water, no. Not on water.
Yes, staying in water, yep, they wanted to stay in water.
Pardon me.
That's okay.
I got too many papers, I'm gonna turn it the wrong way.
Water's going from eight-sixty-six to eight-seventy-six, and then the base is going from seven to eight dollars.
Okay. And that funds everything.
That will fund all three capital improvement projects if we choose to do that.
At the current level.
Third one that's there.
At the current level. So let's deal with the motor control center and wrap that up, I guess, that's the, the elephant in the room right now.
That's okay.
I had, I had gotten some information from both the water operator and Kurt, and sent that out to the board members by email last night, and, you know, ready to have a discussion.
Is that your, the picture of the equipment?
Well, and a mayor
That's part of it, that's one, yeah, part of it, you already had a picture of the old, but you could picture this.
This, this, yes, okay, got it.
Which is actually at the well station. I guess the, the main point is, you know, we're, we're not saying, Kurt's not saying that the current water control system is failed, it has not, it does have issues, one of the major issues that it has is, right now, when the motor control system sends the signal to the pumps to operate, to fill Northwood Chapel, they are either on, or they're off, full capacity or no capacity, there's no ability with our current motor control systems, forty-five years old, there's no ability with that to modulate the pumps.
No efficiency, basically, there's no efficiency.
There's, there's two issues with that, number one, it runs full bore constantly, which more wear and tear, this, that, you know, all those things that go along with the motor running at, at full capacity every time it runs, the second issue is, is that when those pumps kick on, it's much like happens at the ski hill when they turn on their snowmaking machines, B L P gives us a peaking charge.
Draws a big power.
Huge increase in the rate for all the time the pumps are running.
Does somebody have to go and turn their gun?
No.
No, it's an automatic system, it gets the demand from either Chapel or Northwoods that has reached a certain level, Cox has to fill those tanks back up, and that's what this does.
Well, it's automatic, but it's never, uh, it never normally runs, if we, if we have an emergency where we have to, for example, uh, we had to fill Northwoods manually, okay, because of another problem that existed that was during the tank, uh, we have to run it manually, and there've been a couple of occasions where we've had to, uh, also shut off a portion of the transmission from Northwoods to Cox, uh, for repairs, so we were unable, you know, we needed a pump in that situation too, so, they're different, it's mostly right now emergency operation, but in that case, we have to manually, uh, operate the pumps, just put them on manual, and also basically manually observe the, the tank level, I'm sorry, that's not true about the tank level, it's only the station pumps, we can monitor the tank level, uh, the way that's right, if the pumps are okay, you know, they, they just need some minor maintenance, uh, it's just the controls, the electrical, basically the rectal system from the wall to the pump needs replacing.
Okay.
So it's, it's not integrated to all of our other controls, so, you know, when, when we look on our system screen, uh, we can see the Cox tank, but we can't see, uh, the station.
Dave?
As I understand it from my research today, the, and it takes a bit of an explanation, so kind of bear with me.
Okay.
As I understand the system, the, the well field has no reservoir, that reservoir is actually the Chapel Ridge tank.
Right.
The Chapel Ridge tank, which is filled from, the well system has how many, five pumps?
Five, five, five wellheads.
How many pumps?
Each wellhead's a pump.
Five pumps, that's operated by a automatic control center.
Correct.
Correct? And that turns the number of pumps on that we need when we need it to fill Chapel Ridge, and Chapel Ridge fills Northwoods normally.
And that operates from the wellfield pump house, it's the, it's the system, the motor control system there.
Correct, and so, the Northwoods tank also has four pumps, correct?
Right. And That's a little bit of a situation, it's two service pumps and
I understand that.
Two fire pumps.
And the two pumps, or the four pumps, two of them operate off of tank level?
Yes.
And two of them operate off pressure.
Right, yes.
And those four pumps are controlled by a automatic motor control center at Northwoods, correct?
Cox, isn't it, no?
No.
What operates the four pumps at Northwoods?
Oh, the Northwoods pumps?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got their own controls.
All right, so there's a control center at the Northwoods tank that operates those four pumps as we need them, and the only direction those four pumps can pump water is from Northwoods up to Chapel Ridge, correct?
Are we talking about Northwoods now?
Yes.
Northwoods and Chapel.
Northwoods cannot fill Chapel, Northwoods is only to, uh, supply a pressure district, which is in close proximity.
What do the four pumps do that are set in the Northwoods?
They're basically the same thing, they're backup.
Backup to what?
To inability to supply water from wellfield.
So in that instance, they would be used to fill the Chapel Ridge tank?
Not those pumps, we don't have
How does Chapel Ridge get filled?
If we, if we lose the wellfield, how does Chapel Ridge get filled?
It, it doesn't get filled.
It's, it'll get filled from Cox.
Well, we have to go from Cox to Northwoods and then
Yeah, right, that's what he asked, how the system works.
Yeah.
The, so if we lose the ability to fill the Chapel Ridge tank from the wellfield, the Chapel Ridge tank is filled from the Northwoods tank, correct?
Cox to Northwoods.
From Northwoods. Correct?
Right.
And that's what those four pumps are used for? Yes, no?
Uh-uh.
Fire pumps aren't used for that.
Okay, but the automatic control center at Northwoods turns on the pumps it needs to make the level correct at the Chapelwood tank, right?
No.
So what are the four pumps used for at Northwoods?
They're using, uh, they operate in Northwoods district, the Northwoods district, the pressure district, which is normally supplied by the Chapel Ridge tank.
Are they all pressure pumps, or are they, there's, I got two of them were, were quantity pumps and two of them were pressure pumps? Are they all pressure pumps or are they, I thought two of them were quantity pumps and two of them were pressure pumps?
Well, we call them domestic and fire, yes.
Okay. Do they simply pump water into the Northwoods tank or do they pump water out of the Northwoods tank?
They don't do either of those things. The Northwoods pumps only pressurize the district.
Northwoods water district.
Correct. And I understand that that automatic control center is normally switched off unless we need it. We send somebody else there and they turn it on.
Well, it's not switched off, it's automatic. But that one will come on if needed.
So it's an automatic one that's.
So it'll just turn on if there's a problem out there with the water pressure or the water level at Northwoods, those pumps will turn on and take care of the problem and nobody has to go out there and do anything.
Well, if there's a problem, we have to go on.
If they don't go on?
Correct.
Yeah. But automatically.
Normally, there's some special.
Normally, they should go on and it should be taken care of.
Right.
Okay. The Cox tank has the ability, does it have the ability to gravity feed to Northwoods if it needs to?
No.
No.
And if we've sent a water off to Northwoods from the Cox tank, it has to be pumped?
Correct.
And that's what the four pumps at the Cox tank do is they, two of them are level tanks to maintain the level at Northwoods, correct?
Yep.
And two of them are pressure pumps to maintain the pressure in the Northwood system if we need it.
Right.
And those are run by an automatic control center in the Cox tank.
Pump house.
At the Cox tank.
Well, it's not totally automatic, but yes.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get to. The reason it's not totally automatic is that they're actually turned off unless we need them, right? The automatic system could say we need water, but nobody's going to get the pumps on unless somebody goes out there and turns them on.
From Cox to Northwoods.
The Cox pumps.
Motor control center does that, huh?
Well, yeah, they can read the level of the Northwoods tank. But it doesn't normally fill the Northwoods tank unless Chapel Ridge, for whatever reason, is not filling the Northwoods tank.
I understand that, but if it, if the Cox pumps, pump house detects a low level at the Northwoods tank, do those pumps automatically turn on to take care of that problem or do they have to be turned on manually?
Well, if it's just a matter of low water, they should come on, yes, if they're turned on.
So is this pertinent to?
Yes.
The big question is, are they turned on all the time? I mean, you said, you just said if they're turned on. Is the motor control system at Cox automatic?
It is automatic, as far as I know.
Does anybody have to go there and turn it on or does it operate itself when there's a detection of a low level?
It does come on when it's a low level, yes.
By itself, nobody has to go there and turn it on? When does someone have to go and turn it on?
When you need more of a demand at Northwoods.
Well, right, the time we did it before is because the.
Because you were draining the tank.
That was my question.
Not on purpose though. The Chapel Ridge tank was draining.
Okay.
The Northwoods tank was gone through water, but it couldn't get the water.
All right, was that the situation where the valve failed and it was draining the Chapel tank?
Yes.
Okay, so at that point, the Northwoods tank.
So then we're left with having to fill both Chapel Ridge and Northwoods at the same time. So that's a case where we turn it on manually so that we can do it.
So continuously.
Right, otherwise it, you know, it'll take forever.
So Kirk, how often would that happen?
It's not like all the time.
Once a year?
Right.
Maybe?
But you won't know until the person goes out there and throws a switch. You won't know whether the rest of the system is going to be automatic. If it was automatic and it was working that way, like most of our protective systems, you know when the automatic part doesn't work. But if you have to wait till you have somebody go out to throw the switch, you don't have any idea whether the rest of it is in complete functioning or.
Yeah, but when you have water drops and alarm on that.
Well, that's, that's one thing that'll turn it on.
Yeah.
But without that, any time that you have to send somebody else to throw the switch, you don't have any idea whether the rest of it is in complete functioning order. You'd have to have somebody go out there and periodically test it. Isn't that right?
Well, and also too, I deal with those systems every day. What the computer tells you and what's actually happening is not.
Might not be the same.
Might not be the same. So I think the last problem we had at Chapel Ridge was, I think the valve said it was closed and it was open.
Right.
And that's what drove the situation.
So, so I'm only trying to point out, there might be a system or a maintenance issue here that needs to be addressed. But, but on top of that, it addresses the need for automatic systems being in place and ready to go.
Operational.
Operational, good point.
And the point.
Is that what you're trying to get to?
Yeah, the question, no, the question I'm trying to get to is, it's an automatic system. We're being told it's an automatic system. An automatic system by my definition says that we're all sitting home having dinner and the level, for whatever reason, on the Northwood tank drops below a predetermined mark, does the pumps turn on at Cox and fill it up?
No.
What?
They're supposed to, they're supposed to. You know, and what we're really dealing with is the reliability of the system. I mean, we have multiple control systems. We have one at the well field pump station, we have, that has a separate one which was installed when that was built. And that basically operates the five pumps and pumps to the Chapel Ridge tank. Northwoods tank is designed to serve the Northwoods pressure district only. That's, that's what it's designed to do, to serve that Northwoods pressure district. So when the Chapel tank, Chapel Ridge tank basically runs down and Northwoods is filling that tank, we rely on Cox to backfill Northwoods. And, you know, and that's, that's the issue. I'm not saying that the motor control system at Cox is failing. What we're saying is it's forty-five years old. It's old technology combined with new technology. And the main issue that we've got at the Cox tank is, besides its age, is that when it turns on the pumps at Cox, they run at maximum capacity for as long as they're on. We cannot modulate that capacity, which puts us into a condition of basically overrunning the pumps and secondly, from getting ourselves into that spiked electricity charge. We know it's going to fail. I mean, it's going to fail. It's forty-five years old, it's electronic.
I know if we, where I work, if we run the pumps over the demand, it's a five thousand dollar charge immediately.
Yeah, that's the peaking charge that you get from BLP, which is now thirty percent higher. But, but at any event, there were new, you know, Kirk talked about codes. My OSHA has adopted new codes basically for the arc flash that's a potential from them. And our older system is more susceptible to the arc flashing if there's any kind of a failure than the newer system. So that's what he's proposing is that we upgrade, modernize the Cox motor control system for the reliability aspect of it and to be able to modulate the pumps rather than running at full capacity all the time when they're needed and only to the point that they're needed to avoid that peaking charge. So that's, that's the rationale behind the proposal.
And these VFDs, which I'm very familiar with it, when they do start, they ramp the pump up slowly so you're not using, you're not getting that peak charge because it comes up real slow. It can run at a higher rate and then it comes back down. So it runs at whatever the tank level needs to be.
Will that come on automatically?
If it's automatic, yes, it will. It's upgraded, yes.
You can set it to manual and that's what Kirk was talking about. The situation we had with the valve at the Chapel tank in the middle of the night that drained the tank basically, had the Northwoods tank almost drained and they had to manually turn on the pump set at Cox.
If it's an automatic system, why did we have to manually turn it on? If there's two of them that sense the level of the Northwood tank, why didn't they turn on by themselves?
Good question.
Well, that's the first question we made.
We had a failure of the communication system.
Which has nothing to do really with the water control, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a simple thing as the automatic portion was turned off.
No, I don't think so. I think it was more of the, there was a failure of the PLC as well and they had to go and manually monitor it and then visually monitor the individual.
So we didn't make the improvement that will automatically, it won't come on the big series of flow?
Well, it would come on slower, but you can't guarantee that the same thing won't happen again. And it has to be manually turned on. But when it does automatically go on, the pumps would not be at full capacity. It would be at a lower capacity and then progress, progress up. I mean, it's basically, it's just a decision the board needs to make whether you can be proactive or wait till it fails. I mean, that's, you know, the proposal that's before you is to not wait until it fails, is to upgrade it now and be done with it and, you know, avoid that, the pumps coming out at maximum capacity.
So if this failed tomorrow, how quickly could we get a new one? Is this something that has to be put on a bolt from China?
We could probably get, it's probably going to be a starter if it fails. Okay, we could probably get that from a ton for office.
I mean, it's repairable, it's not.
But again, we just be, if you look at the photo.
It'd be a band-aid.
Of existing, I mean, it's basically, everything is like, got a small box here, or something over there, you know. It just basically disconnects and on off switches, that kind of stuff. So it's.
So Dave's question is.
It's useful, eh? It could fail anytime.
Yeah. Is this something that has to be done?
Generator is definitely more critical because at least we have power, generator will give power. But, you know, it's a standard. You know, I talked to just a local electrician yesterday, John Prince, about it. He said, well, it's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, it's, it's, so he's in fits these days, you know, I mean, modern equipment, I mean, it has to be code. So, you know, we can't do it like it is now. We agree with it.
If we get this new one, Kirk, will that take care of our questions as far as being automatic and take care of itself? The new system?
Well, it'll definitely be, yeah, more reliable and safe. I mean, the safety is a big thing, I mean, okay.
As much as any new equipment is. You know, any new equipment can fail just as much as old equipment. You know, the, the primary issue, I think, for, I mean, and if it does fail, we automatically operate it. You know, it's overtime, you're talking about, you know, somebody being called out to operate. If, you know, if the board wants to defer it, it's certainly deferrable and, you know, we can respond to whatever needs to be responded to. But is there a guarantee that a new piece of equipment won't fail? No. I mean, it could, it's more likely that something forty-five years or so old would fail or be more difficult to repair if it does fail. If there are parts, still parts available, it's mainly electronics, but it's old electronics. But I think to me, the most important part of this is the pumps cannot be controlled under the new system. They're on or they're off and then you face the peaking charge.
So if the new piece of equipment has a thirty-eight year expected life and we already have an older piece that's forty-five years old, even though in a lot of cases, things that were built thirty, forty years ago were actually built better, even washing machines have lasted longer than the newer ones do.
Yeah, absolutely.
It, it's just a question of insurance. Do you want to, we just did that with one of our washers. It was still running, but it wasn't.
It goes down.
It would cost more to run it because of the electricity. And if it stops, we're stuck.
A lot of people, a lot of things, people depend upon this thing working right.
And how long could we operate if this went down?
Well, it wouldn't stop operation, you'd just have to manually operate.
Right, so it's just a matter of manpower then, we'd have to discontinually keep.
And that's, that's where the generator would come in.
Yeah, generator would kick in. But basically what it amounts to is that there would be an alarm and if the system didn't work, there would be a separate alarm that would call, call out whoever's on call that would then respond to manually operate the system.
My main concern is, like I said, reliability and safety. But I keep repeating this, but we're getting closer and closer to the time where we can't use the wells for everything, right? Because we.
The capacity.
It's got to be sustainable, all right? Right now, it's, it's kind of wet, so we're fine. But, you know, it's not going to be wet forever.
So how is getting this going to make a difference that in there?
What I'm saying is, it's going to, when I reach that point, that means we're going to have to start operating Cox tomorrow.
Setting, pumping city water to Northwoods.
At that point, I'd have to cut the demand somehow. The only way I can do that is to cut out a portion of the system. And then most logical would be.
Pumping city water to Northwoods, yeah.
But that's more demand, that has nothing to do with whether this part fails.
Well, this would operate Cox.
What I'm saying is right now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we deal with it in an emergency situation.
Right, okay.
What I like to do is be prepared, you know, for, I don't want a continual emergency.
What tank are we feeling up on the Cloven Avenue? What's it coming out of?
It's the pumping the mountain.
Well, sometimes it's Lincoln, sometimes it's the mountain.
Either Lincoln tank or mountain tank. Yeah, we backfill through those tanks. And then, you know, technically, we're serving everybody that lives Lincoln West.
Right, that's going out of what tank?
That's on Cox.
Does that answer your question, Dave?
No.
Well, not the question of whether or not to get it?
No.
And spend the money?
You're talking about the automatic.
Talking about the operation portion.
It appears that we keep calling an automatic system, an automatic system, and it really isn't an automatic system, that there's some involvement manually that has to be there before it becomes really automatic. Semi-automatic might be a good term.
But does that make a difference as to whether or not we buy this part?
No, we can move on.
Okay.
So are we okay?
So it's eighty-five thousand, that's.
Well, you know, I mean.
But it's funded over.
Well, I think, you know, what Dave's getting at is, yeah, I mean, we have, we have a water operator. I mean, that, his job is to operate the water system. That's what he does. And he monitors the controls and he makes the adjustments that need to be made in the system. You know, that's who, that's Lane, Paul Dinas, that's who puts some input on this in terms of the potential replacement of the motor control. But, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's his job. So, you know, our water system does have a manual capacity to it. We try to automate as much with the communications from tank to tank and pump to pump and all those kinds of things. But there still needs to be human interaction, human oversight. What we're talking about is most of the time that it's on manual is outside of our normal working hours. And that's one covered by call. So they get, if something happens and if an alarm goes off, they're automatically taped out and buy that alarm. So they know what to respond into and what the issue is.
I can tell you too, from the water side of things, if you've upgraded your system or in the process of upgrading your system and you have an emergency and you have a violation, the DQ is much harder on you if you haven't done your due diligence in upgrading the system. Especially when you have prior knowledge of that.
So what would that penalty be? Is it a fine?
It's usually fines, yes. And they can be pretty hefty.
You know, this is actually no different than in several other departments. Basically, there's, you know, there are issues where we have aging issues going on that, you know, it's a matter of how long do you go before you replace the issue or correct the issue. It's a, it's a judgment call in some cases. You know, the motor control system that we have at Cox tank is the oldest motor control system that we have in the system. You know, we've been progressively improving them because we've been building new tanks and expanding the system. They all have new motor control systems in them. The complexity comes in and now we have separate districts. You know, even though we have Chapel Ridge tank, Northwoods tank, Cox tank, they don't all serve all of the system. They serve portions of the system and the Cox tank is the key. That's the one that receives the water from the city, feeds water back to the city and also feeds water to the rest of the system when it's needed. That's our main tank.
Yeah, the water system in the township, in our township is, is more complex than people think because of the city factor in there. The city fills Cox tank and then basically west of Cox tank is our well system at this time.
Built to Chapel Ridge tank.
Yes, and previous to Chapel Ridge tank, the city water went all the way to Northwoods. That's where we would pump it up to Northwoods. But when we got the well system, we kind of separated those districts. And I believe they're, they're even belved off, if I'm correct. Is it, and we only have to, if we have to fill Northwoods, we have to open the valve and fill. So actually, the systems are separate at the moment. And that's my understanding of the system. But it's complex really. And it wasn't designed for Northwoods to fill Cox either. That was not a design, we did not design it like that. So, but we only designed it to go from Cox to Northwoods.
And part of phase two was to connect Northwoods to Cox. That was part of it, so we wouldn't have been able to backfill from Northwoods to Cox. We cannot do that now.
That would have solved that problem, yes. But we didn't do that, so.
It's just different because when I was going through this, it's just like when we're talking about the road project, you know, you improve it, you don't leave it alone, whatever. I think you just should do it.
If anything.
If it takes care of the questions that we ask.
Well, if anything.
Automatic and all the others.
I think these VFDs that are being, would be part of that motor control system would be a major upgrade to the system and help in, in keeping the energy costs lower in case we didn't need that, so.
Well, and just by reference, VFD, all that means is variable frequency drives and it's basically pumps.
Controls the pump speed.
From slow to fast to, as opposed to on or off.
It's an industry standard now, I think we should go in there. VFDs are. VFDs are, in every pump house I've been in, there's VFDs in there now, so...
So Kirk, is this twenty-eight thousand or eighty-five in the current budget? We just had reprinted.
It's, yeah, but it's, no, it's on two thousand nineteen.
I think, yeah, I thought you pulled it out. And all we left was the generator and the PLC.
Yeah, it's not in there right now.
So this would have to...
Would have to fund it.
We'd have to fund it somehow, if you want to try to do it in nineteen.
Well, even the way I presented it, it's like a three-year thing. Even if you approved it as I presented it, it'll be three years before we...
Twenty-one before you actually buy it.
Before it's funded. You may have to buy it sooner. It's possible, too.
Well, if it fails, I mean, obviously if it fails. But what Kirk's proposing is to plan on replacing it in twenty-one, fund it over the three-year intervals, a smaller amount to not impact the rates as much.
Right. Well, we could not impact the rates, leave the budget the way it is, and we know we're going to have more money in that operations reserve account by the end of the year. So we could just leave the budget the way it is and still fund it.
At the end of September, you'll be six thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars ahead of your three-month goal. Then you have three more months to add to it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Kirk just told me that twenty-eight thousand is in the two thousand nineteen budget.
Okay. Well, and we don't have to worry about it.
It's, I mean, it's with all these changes.
Yeah.
It's in the budget.
But, but again, but again, the board wants to defer it. You can defer it to the two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget and pull it out of the nineteen budget.
It's fun to make sure before we go on that we know what we're doing with it. I mean, it's, I'd like to make sure all the questions get answered because it is a complex question in terms of the operation of the water system.
But even if you pull it out, it's not going to make a ma... Twenty-eight thousand dollars isn't going to make much of a difference, and I'm not going to argue over five cents in the volume rate.
I guess the question here is like the question in several other places that we'll be talking about in the budget. Do we do a proactive replacement, or do we wait for it to fail and then replace it?
You still run into, depending on how long you're amortizing it for, you could run into the back funding issue, too. You know, we decide to do this for three years, it fails next year, now we've got to back fund or take it out of some other fund. So that's still a concern on whatever project.
Quite frankly, if it fails tomorrow, it's going to get replaced. I mean, we'll just have to find it in the two thousand eighteen budget. I mean, on something, how are we going to replace it? But from a planning standpoint, it's what, you know, it's the same thing we do with patrol car. We know that the patrol car is going to be, have to be replaced in twenty-one, so I've got it in twenty nineteen and twenty to fund that spread over the two years. And we'll be talking about that in the general fund budget, I already have. Just because we know that that patrol car is going to reach eighty thousand miles, and that's when they replace it.
I mean, it's, with regard to the motor control center, it's not failing today, it's operating.
So let me get another clarification, because when I reprinted the water improvement form based on what you said from the last meeting, I didn't understand... I knew that there were questions. I didn't understand that the twenty-eight thousand was staying in the budget. So my question is, of the other items that were on there that you crossed off, are any of those still in there?
No. The only reason the motor control stayed in is because it was going to be subject of the discussion today.
Right.
For a decision as to whether it was staying in the budget or coming out.
Okay, so the PC, the eight-inch main and PVC Brookton was literally taken out, right? You said you wanted to wait, but is it in the budget right now?
No, that's waste water.
Oh, no, no, that's water.
No, no.
It's not in the nineteen budget.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
The generator, here's what I have in my notes from, yes, from Wednesday, which I dated. Motor Control Center was going to stay in for discussion at this meeting for a determination.
That's correct.
The ATS generator was approved to stay in the budget, as was the PLC.
Correct.
Stay in the budget, and the eight-inch main PRV for Brookton came out.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. So we actually need to add twenty-eight thousand to that water improvement spreadsheet so that it's not one hundred and ten, it's one hundred and thirty-eight, thirty, three thirty-three, just so you know that the numbers on there are not right. That's already accounted for in the nineteen budget. Okay?
Ninety-eight, three thirty-three, you're talking about it.
I think Lynn's talking about her sheet.
Her sheet.
Yeah. The water improvement sheet that I printed for you, the small one, the small one. Keep going. This, that's the way I understood the discussion in the meeting. I knew there were questions on the motor control, but I didn't know if they were left, if the funding was left in there.
And it was.
And it was. So I should have left it on there. So that projected cost number is in the budget, one hundred and thirty-eight, three thirty-three. Okay, just so you know. That's what Kirk is saying. Those three items are funded in the water budget for nineteen.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Not one hundred and ten?
No. Well, it couldn't be one hundred and ten because the PLC, the hundred fifty thousand is in there.
What he's funding for, what he's saying is the projected cost is one hundred and ten thousand.
The PLC is only going to be, is going to be ten thousand, because he didn't, he didn't put it all this year, just ten.
Well, that's the project cost.
Yeah, project.
Yes. Okay.
So that's actually ten thousand, because that's budgeted for only ten thousand this year, the PLC.
Yeah, your total, if the motor control stays in, your total would be ninety-eight, three thirty-three.
Yeah, ninety-eight.
If you leave the motor control in the budget, it'd be the three items, it'd be the motor control, the ATS generator, and the PLC, as budgeted for two thousand nineteen at ninety-eight, three thirty-three.
But the projected cost is not one hundred and ten thousand for two projects, it's one thirty-eight for three.
No.
That's the total cost.
Ninety-eight, three thirty-three.
Right. Right. I'm not talking about the budgeted cost. I'm talking about the projected cost, the first column.
But...
He's got sixty thousand for the generator, fifty for the upgrade, and there's twenty-eight thousand in there.
Okay. But if you look at the projected cost, where's sixty thousand and fifty thousand? The motor control projected cost is eighty-five thousand.
Right.
So it would be one hundred and ninety-five thousand.
You're right, okay. So the budgeted amount is twenty-eight.
The annual amortized amount would be sixty thousand, ten thousand, and twenty-eight thousand, three thirty-three, which should come up to ninety-eight thousand, three thirty-three.
Gotcha, okay.
That's what I'm looking at.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Now, if you have, if something happens, you have to do that, eighty-five thousand. You're going to have to spend eighty-five thousand from somewhere in that.
Or, or, or do whatever repair is necessary to have it continue to function.
Like I said, which wouldn't necessarily be a total replacement, I mean, it could be a repair. If we have a problem, we're just going to replace whatever component fails. First of all, we got two of everything, okay? Two service pumps. So the likelihood of both of them failing at the same time is... So if one fails, it's probably not going to be the whole electrical system, it'll be just that portion. So even though it takes a day, it's, I'm not going to, that's not the eighty-five thousand dollars, no.
But you'll be putting aside this dollar amount.
Right.
Now, is this going to be in a restricted fund now? Like we've talked in the past?
For that project, yeah. Well, that's what you're talking about, yeah.
Yep, having an account number on it.
Set aside for the purpose.
Okay.
But again, you know, that would be, that would be planning to replace the whole motor control center in two thousand twenty-nine.
Right. It would be proactive, but not necessarily spent.
Correct.
We're projecting out eighty-five thousand at today's prices. We don't know what it's going to be in three, four years down the line.
Right, exactly, it's true.
Okay.
Well, I don't have a problem with the motor control. I think it, I think the funding should stay in there. I guess that's our answer.
It's already in there, so it's just...
I don't have a problem.
Moving on.
Does it stay, yeah.
So that means I don't have a problem with the ten cent increase and the base increase, because that's what's going to...
And the dollar increase.
And that's going to cover that. And if people ask you what, why you're doing that, you have justification now, you have these...
I just haven't listened to the tape.
Well, I mean...
It's because we want to provide water supply.
Well, I mean...
The water and wastewater systems are very complex and very misunderstood systems that most, most folks, I mean, the trouble you guys are having, you know, discussing it, the public can't possibly understand how, you know, as far as they know, you got a, you got a hole in the ground someplace that goes to a pipe and that disappears in another hole someplace else, and that's all they care about. You know, they don't know the intricacies of how you get it there or what you do with it.
That and the expense.
Well, the misconception that the public have is, and this is something you have to overcome, too, is we can explain this to them, but then they see that big reserve operation fund there, and they say, "Well, why don't you use that to offset the rates?" And we'll say, "No, you can't use that because we have an emergency in the system that supplied, that's our, that's our insurance policy." And then they don't, that, I guess that helps them understand, but some people, everyone's different, and they don't, they don't agree with that concept, but this board...
It's the same reason that they have insurance.
Insurance, yes.
Well, and our parts are a hundred thousand dollars, they're not twenty-nine, eighty-five.
But that's how you would explain it to the residents, because they don't understand that. They just think...
And they're expensive parts.
I guess the easiest way that I can portray, I guess, that most folks would probably be able to understand when they ask that question is, in two thousand seven, which is when we started pumping water out of our well field, in two thousand seven, we sold total, with pumped water and purchased water, one hundred and thirteen point five million gallons that year. In two thousand seven, our SEV was two hundred and ten million, six hundred and twenty-two. Last year, and, you know, that hundred and thirteen point five million, we've never pumped that much water again since two thousand seven. Closest we came to one year, one hundred and twelve thousand, and we've been as low as ninety million. Two thousand eighteen, this year, our SEV is three hundred and eleven million, one hundred and thirty-eight. We've increased forty-seven point seven percent in SEV. That means growth. That means more people, more houses, more buildings. Forty-seven percent increase over that span from two thousand seven to two thousand eighteen, where our water consumption has remained flat or gone down. That's what Kirk was trying to point to the other day by, when he puts in the budget, decreasing demand.
Correct.
Our growth is going up, but their demand for water is going down because of efficiencies and conservation efforts. That's why our rates have to increase. Because growth goes on and utility goes down, it doesn't mean that our infrastructure costs less. Doesn't mean our operation costs less. Costs more.
Fixed costs remain the same.
That's why those rates go up. You know, and if we don't get, everybody thinks we're rich because of all of the building that's going on. We get four point nine mils. That's all we get, period, in operation. Everything else goes to somebody else out of that twenty-seven mils in your tax bill. We don't get that.
That's like with the city...
Our taxes are going down every year because of heavily rollbacks.
Monday night, the city, Monday night, the city's going to have a public hearing on their rates. They have the same issue we do. Their usage is decreasing, and their fixed costs have stayed the same or increased. So that's why they have to increase their rates. I think it's twelve in water and twenty-five in wastewater to meet up to that, those, that issue. And the residents are mad, but what can they do? They have to maintain the system.
Well, and, like...
We're better off than most, I should say.
We are, we have a young system. I mean, we really have a young system compared. I mean, it was just, what, four years ago, I think it was, the city replaced their last wooden water main?
Yeah, I was going to say that.
I mean, it's, it's growth, it's growing pains.
But if we don't remain proactive, we can follow the path of communities around us that are in deep trouble.
And have their rates increased fifty percent instead of...
Oh, direct. I mean, they raised direct fifty percent.
So it is just good policy to be proactive and take care of this stuff and plan it ahead so that we don't have a big emergency. Nobody would understand raising the rates fifty percent. Nobody.
Not ethical either.
Like I said, it would be thirty-five.
We've got another rate coming.
But that, that thirty-five percent increase in electric utilities is huge for utilities for the public works because they are extremely high users of electricity, very high use. That's part of the, part of the increase.
Okay. We think we're, yes.
Before we leave water, Randy, I'd sent you a message in five ninety-one fifteen has that, a chart of the water purchases that have been made since nineteen ninety-five, but it doesn't show what we produce for water and...
We have that. Kirk finished that off, Lois has it there.
Lois has it now.
We can have it.
Yeah, I think I sent you back and saying we were working on that. Is it all on one sheet or is it two pages?
Just one.
Okay.
I looked all that, I wasn't prepared.
Well, I, yeah, I sent it out there, because the form that I had, the format I had it in was what you had gotten in your budgets. I mean, your packets.
Thank you.
Now, so Lois was working on to get it on one page. That's low.
But they've been combined air, water, pumped and purchased.
Yes.
And see...
She added it to another column.
Okay.
And one more thing for the water, it's not going to be this year in the budget, but for two thousand twenty, which is next year, I believe, we have a three-year rate study that's going to be up for.
Is it right, already?
Yes.
Well, we just, because we just need...
So, yeah, so the three-year rate study from the city, as directed by their contract, will be done in probably mid-nineteen, which will be probably implemented in twenty. So that might, that's going to affect possibly rates also.
Likely will, I would imagine, especially with what the discussion that the city's having right now. Because it's a system-wide, system-wide look, and we'll eventually, we're not like residential or commercial customers, but eventually it will have an impact on our rates.
And that'll be, I think that'll be done mid-next year, hey, Randy, somewhere in there.
Yes, it will.
So for two thousand twenty, that'll be...
Seventeen.
Yeah, so...
It'll be two thousand twenty when they're... Is it seventeen, is it? I think so. Was this last year?
Just, that's just knowledge, so you know it's coming.
It's coming.
Let's go.
Are you good on that, too?
Dave?
Yeah, I'm good.
Dave?
Yep.
Did that give you what you're looking for?
No, but it has nothing to do with this.
No, I mean, it's.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
So you think we're good for water for a while?
I'm good.
You want to jump to wastewater? We've got a half hour.
Okay, wastewater. So I did see in the wastewater, the taking the two CIP projects out dramatically reduced the increase.
I have a question about that.
That's my opinion, but.
Well, I would agree with everything you're saying, but I still have a question.
Go ahead.
The only, where these CIP requests were being funded is out of the rate increase, correct?
Right.
When we took the two CIP requests out, that reduced our CIP request for this year for 2019 by 80.4%. The proposed rate increase didn't decrease 80.4%.
Decreased by.
Pardon? The.
No, it's obviously not on the same rate.
I didn't say before. What I said was, is when we took the CIP requests and we took those two out, that removing those two represented an 80.4% reduction in the CIP funding for this year for 2019. Okay? The $2 and .33 proposed increase, the last time we met, we didn't reduce it by the same percentage, and I wonder why. We went from $2.33 down to a $0.94 increase. If it reduced by the same amount, then it would have been down to like a $0.45 increase.
And I have a question.
Remember though, I, let's see. Previously, there was another, you took out a couple things on the CIP, what were they? Oh, the collection mains and the interceptor upgrades? I added the interceptor initially, but I did not add the collector mains. The collection main and the sanitary collection main for Brooklyn? Is that what you're talking about? No, no. The interceptor and the, I think it's just called collection mains. You took them out and went to air with them to the operations. Okay, so that's part of the rate increase?
Yes.
Correct.
One, I have a question too. The rate that we get from the City of Marquette for the wastewater, because I know we get the rate, same rate the city gets, did that increase, Kirk, this year?
No.
Did not, okay.
Our rate is set by the contract, so it's not going to change until 21. We changed it, don't they? It was 21, I think.
No, I mean for wastewater.
Oh, wastewater.
Did the wastewater.
Right, yeah.
Did the wastewater per.
Well, we pay, yes, we pay the same rate.
As a city.
It's not the same as every citizen pays.
No.
But as an owner, basically, we all pay the same.
Yeah, did that increase, did that increase this year?
Uh, I don't think it did. That's basically been up and down.
Okay. Because I'm trying to quantify.
Right.
This rate increase, and if that rate increases, the plant went up for everyone, then that quantifies that a little bit, because we have really no control over that as owner. That we get what we get, correct?
Right. Okay, I guess, just to finish up my question, under the narrative for 642 sales, it still says that the only thing that justifies that rate increase by is uses decreasing, when in reality, what's driving the 94 cent increase is the approved or the requested, the CIP requests, and then there are a couple maintenance items that were pulled out of the CIP request. Those are the five items now that are driving that rate increase, but it just says uses decreasing.
Well, that's correct. So what that means is, to get the same amount of revenue, you know, I'd have to raise the rate if the demand decreased. And in general, it is, it's up in some years and down some years, but in general, it's going back down.
No, it's not.
It's giving you a general reason for the increase, not a specific one.
Yeah. Because sanitary is basically based on the water.
So if you pulled those projects out of CIP, which you thought should either be done next year or at least begun funding, does that mean you're going to take care of them this year, and that's why they're in this budget?
No.
Well, then they shouldn't be part of your operational budget for this year.
No, those are the items that we had to pull out of the CIP and put into maintenance, correct?
Right, that's what I just said.
The other two items, yes.
So those are going to be done this year?
No, it was like a two-year, I think funding was two years. It was like, so I funded half, yeah, PC.
So why didn't you leave them in CIP then? Isn't that the idea?
Because you told me to take them out.
Because they're maintenance.
But I thought that they were, then that makes sense that if you're going to do them right away, so you're.
Well, it still has to be done, so.
Yeah, we decided at one of the meetings that because that was maintenance and not capital improvement project, that they need to be funded someplace else.
So you're going to do, split it in half, do it two years?
But I guess, I don't think I'm getting the answer to my question. Why isn't there more narrative under 642 sales that explains the rate increase? Because it's not just the uses decreasing.
Oh, okay.
There's a number of other things that are driving that rate, and we just neglect to mention them.
So I remember that discussion.
So is that the only reason then that it's going up is because you moved them? You moved those two items out to operations?
That's part of it, yeah, but it's not, it's not all. All right, so we need, 590-1 needs amendment under 642.
And then also too, on wastewater, the board has to remember, we do have a smaller user base to spread that across also. It's about half of what water is, so.
All I'm saying is, the only thing that went up is the rates, and the only thing that was.
But that's part of your, that would be part of your answer too. They're smaller. Your numbers would have to.
I didn't say I was disagreeing with the uses decreasing. I'm just saying there's more there than just uses decreasing that drives that rate increase, and it should be in the narrative.
Wants more rationale in the narrative. So I said, 590-1 needs to be amended to provide more narrative on that. We can do that.
But you know what the question's going to be from the public if they look at it? They're going to say, why do you have, especially with wastewater, because there's more, why do you have more money sitting here and you're still raising the rates? You still have to kind of justify that.
We didn't look at that part of the operational reserve yet.
Okay.
Is that where you're going?
Yeah. That's where you've got to calculate what those reserves actually need to be.
So, exactly. So this is just, this is the end part of whatever discussion needs to be first, as well, I was trying to say.
So we're.
Your explanation, yeah.
At the same time, we get some good numbers that we can hang our hat on for the water operational reserve. We can get some operational reserve numbers for wastewater and make the adjustment. And then I'm assuming then if we decide that we want to take some of that money out of this retained earnings account and put it into, towards some capital improvement projects after we fund the operational reserve account, that it would take away from, it would lower the rate structure.
See why that explanation was good, so that you can figure out how it flows downhill? Pardon the pun.
It only flows downhill if it's water pushing.
Now, are there valves open, or is there a motor valve that needs to be turned on automatically?
I have a question.
Okay.
On debt service, 654, they're talking, they're talking about debt service will be reduced upon the sale of chocolate township. Do you have any idea how much that debt service is going to be decreased once the sale is completed?
The debt service is going to be 10% of our cost.
But you're saying debt service will be reduced upon the sale of 1% capacity to chocolate.
Right, which hasn't happened yet.
But when it happens, do you have any projected figure as to what it's going to decrease?
It's just a lump sum. They're paying us, first of all.
But our responsibility.
Yeah.
But that's, yeah, but we're also playing flow and flow is down and everything else, so that's all works into the final.
The only thing that's going to change is the debt service.
We'll be on less than the hope for that.
Yeah, it would be smaller. I have no idea what they.
But we'll change the 660 a month. Will be enough to change it?
Uh, yes.
Should.
So once you sell it, we have, we compute it, that will be, that will be a change coming?
Probably next year.
My guess is that would reflect in probably the 2020 budget.
Yeah, it won't happen till next.
We'd be calculating it, because it won't happen until 2019.
When's the sale taking place?
Well, our plan is to send them a bill to December 1st.
Oh.
This year.
Well, then if you send a bill this year and we're getting paid this year, then we should have some adjustment next year.
That's only for the purchase. That's not, that's not the, the ownership allocation has already been made. Every, all three units passed resolutions to do that. Okay? There is only for a dollar amount of what that will do.
Well, I understand, but my point being, okay, the, there are two monpounds here. Okay, so the second one just occurred in 2018, so it won't happen until 2019. So that part won't happen until I think it's April. The sale is a different item. That's going to be basically one, a one-time payment. Understand that.
Yeah.
But the debt service is what we're paying for the wastewater then?
Percent that we're using.
The wastewater, yes.
So once we sell that portion, a 1%, we're going to pay the debt service all next year on something we don't own?
No.
And we can adjust it during the year.
Well, own.
There's no reason we couldn't.
But we're going to own 10% less therefore. The debt's going to be 10% less. The question that Ernie's asking is, if we're projecting no change from last year's rate of 660, why would we not reduce the rate this year because we have 1% less ownership? Right?
Right, yeah.
So what does 1% less ownership do to the 660 for 2019? That's the question. Well, we could do that, but you know, during the water discussion, we discussed leaving debt service terms at the same.
To pay off the debt quicker.
To pay off the debt faster. Correct. But part of the debt and the wastewater fund, just like the water fund, is our public works building. So, I mean, you could certainly do whatever you want. Okay, so. That was based on.
But I think it's going back, and if that's what you're going to do, then we have to have some documentation saying this is what's going to happen.
That's a January discussion, though.
It's got to be discussed sometime.
Whatever, I mean, savings is not going to be large.
No.
It's not going to be much at all. 1% is not going to make much of a difference, but there'll be a difference. You know, and if the decision at that point is to apply that difference towards the building's principal, as Kirk said, if that's part of it, then that's.
That's fine, but we need to have some knowledge that this is going to happen.
He's looking for a commitment to what's going to occur.
I understand.
Actually.
Want to know the difference and where it's going?
Actually, I've already put that 10% reduction in the 2019 budget, so it's already there. So the expense is already projected to be, for the debt, to be 10% less.
So that's why you're saying it doesn't go up, the 660?
No, I'm saying.
That's not the reason? Okay.
If you've been saying you wanted to keep the rates the same, debt service rates the same, and just pay off other debt quicker.
So he took that, if we were talking about water, he took that for his department?
What I'm saying is, someone reads this and say, okay, it's going to go down. By reading this, they're going to say it should go down.
Yeah, it's going to go down in 2019, which is, that's a true fact.
But the savings is going to go toward the purchase of the building, you know.
Is that what's on 591-16? In 2018, you show a debt service wastewater, the treatment fund is 482, and 2018, and you show a 476 in 2019, and then you show public works at $1.78 in 2018, and you show going up to $1.84 in 2019.
Get to that page, was it 591?
591-16.
It's the end of water.
Public Works Facility.
Last page in water.
591-16, yeah, that's.
He probably should be divided.
And he just, the creepy is moving all the way around.
I think that might be what he's talking about.
Yeah, it's the right. I just, the documentation does not indicate that, so.
We should have a line saying revert.
Which means you have to feel through everything to try and get to.
Well, you need a narrative.
Yeah, that's, that's all. 10 words would probably take care of it real quick.
And then we can decide if we don't want to do it or not, if you know what he's projecting.
Yeah, that's true. I don't have any problem moving it. It's just that we don't know what's happening in that.
591.
The last page in the water tab.
I used to, yeah, it's in the water. This is wastewater.
Maybe next year we divide this page, Kirk, and put one on each tab.
So the difference is six cents?
Whatever the difference is, it doesn't matter.
Okay, but the difference is six cents, and the board needs to decide if they want the six cents to come off of the 660, or if they want the 66 to go to the public works facility.
Because right now, that's, he's got to go into the building.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that. It's just that if someone asks a question, how do you explain it?
I'm not chastising you, Ernie. I'm just agreeing with you. And that's right, Tommy. When you go ahead there and there's $2.91 going to land purchase, did we actually make a decision if that's where that's going to go?
No, this is his recommendation. The whole budget is his recommendation, so we have that freedom to.
And actually, when we approve the budget, that's where.
Then it's real.
Then it's what happens.
We change it. I change it every meeting that we can.
Well, I don't have a problem leaving it where it's at. I mean, it's going to pay everything down quicker, so.
I don't either. It's just that reading through it, you really don't know what's happening in that.
Well, and that's where we got stuck before, because, and it's nobody's fault. It's just that he was making projections or recommendations, same thing with the CIP, and one year, none of us talked about it at all. And I pointed it out to Dennis. Did you realize we didn't, we pressed the budget and didn't even talk about the CIP? And that's, that's what got me going on this whole thing of analyzing it in spreadsheets, and we have to do this. We have to, we have to ask these questions and determine. Maybe with Harglow gone, if we're looking at that same page, $1.71 and then the DWRF 50 cents, maybe we choose to take half of Harglow and put it on the building and all of the DWRF, you know, but that needs to be our decision. He's making a recommendation. We don't have to do that. But we can look at this in January and pick it apart. Unless you want to change something now, doesn't matter.
Well, just to keep track of it on page 590-2, I think what President Johnson was talking about, we started at the top of the page, we have a small notation on the description that recommends no change of 660 per month for equivalent meter. Debt service will be reduced upon the sale of 1% of the capacity to chocolate township. Benefit to be applied to principal of facility building.
And that's the recommendation. We either accept it or we don't.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's what everybody here is kind of questioning, is if we make a blanket statement and it doesn't really tell you what's going on, what's being recommended.
The rationale has to be itemized a little better. Did you have anything else, Ernie?
Yeah, I'm bringing up like 577, the wastewater meter interceptor.
Let's, let us catch up.
577.
Are you on the narrative?
Yes, I'm on the narrative.
Okay, page 594.
590-.
Page four, okay.
We've been talking about this for as long as I've been on the boards, I think. And my concern is if something happens, where do we stand?
And what are we talking about on there?
It's the master sewer metering system interceptor which runs on the metering station to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
There was a point in time, it was up over 80, 90,000, and we've got it down now to less way down. We made 62,000 in 2011. I'm just concerned with where we had on that repair. Are we having, are we getting to a critical situation on that at all?
Well, we've been doing a number of repairs, and a lot of it was revolved recently has been involved around the, around the block construction in the city, manhole issues and the right of things such as there, the sewer interceptors we're talking about, the long-term plant.
of things such as there, the sewer interceptor we're talking about, the long-term plan for that thing.
Well, we did tell Ozet that we could here, develop the tenant, and then what happened is we did correct the most critical issue that we had, which was, we had a sewer main going through a manhole, and it was very close to the creek, so it was just east of one of the overpasses, or maybe it's around one of them. So, anyway, that, but, and I, and that cost quite a bit of money, but, and the other stuff is not quite as critical, it was just more, some infiltration, you know, things like bad tabs. There's one, one area that basically, that's a little bit more difficult would be, we've got one pipe that's got reverse grade, it's a crossover on Washington Street to get to the bypass, so, basically what that does is that increase the, our maintenance time spent. It has to be cleaned more often.
Okay.
And that needs to be done, but it's, you know, and that's why I did actually, I put half of that, I believe, in the mission's budget. So the budget number vice budget, you'll see there's kind of a big number where there's usually a smaller number.
And I've been seeing this on the budget, year in and year out, trying to, to man, trying to get this off there so we don't have to worry about it at all.
Well, I think getting off there to worry about it is going to take some intervention now, because I know what one of your discussions about possibly lining it with a synthetic liner or a plastic liner, basically, to solve some of the-
Well, that's something existing, we've got 41 with something existing. But we just took another look at that, and I haven't seen the results yet, to know exactly what the extent of that is.
So the extension-
The interceptor, I do know what it is.
The extension of that sentence should have been, half of this is, half of the 75,000 is in this year's budget, then?
Thirty-seven-five.
Okay, that, it would have been good to have that statement on there.
So you've got half of it in there, thirty-seven-five?
Because it says it's still not completed, so I'm thinking that you're going to get around to it at some point, but it doesn't say that it is in there.
So add 50%, allocated to the 2019 budget.
Yep.
I think before we get into wastewater, I think we need that three-month reserve operations number for all calls.
Yeah, but some of these questions might help get this cleaned up, too.
The last question I have is on 579, the wastewater treatment plant. And there it is, and I'm looking at the printed tool. I'm looking at the 579, the dollar figures. This year it was estimated total of 130, 134,000, next year's 143,000, but yet we're selling part of that plant.
What number, Ernie?
579.
79.
It's on 590-5, page.
Okay, got it.
But they're talking, which is probably 8% of the total flow, if we're selling part of it.
We're selling plastic, we're not selling flow.
But we're-
So we pay two things. We pay what's called demand charges, which is mostly the debt, and a few other fixed charges, and then we play, we pay a flow cost, which is basically, how much is it cost to treat it?
Probably using.
That's not an actual use, then, that's a-
It is actual use.
If it's actual use-
See, the capacity's not based on actual use, capacity's based on what's the asset in the plan.
Okay, now that makes sense to me, because I was thinking, we're selling part of it, which will affect the flow, but the reality is not affecting the flow.
Now, what their concern was, was the capacity because of the addition of the tribal development. They needed more capacity than what they actually had to meet their maximum flow.
Okay, that, now that makes sense to me now.
Anything else?
Dave had a question, other question.
David had it.
I don't.
I was waiting to see if Ernie had anything else.
I have some other stuff, but really it's immaterial to that, we're just asking for more, more information to get through. Because I remember a long time ago, I asked, what's it cost to put in a grinder pump, and things like this here, different costs of that, so we have some. So it's immaterial far as the budget at this point in time, it's just those kinds of data.
Do you want to type something up and give it to him, and he wants to-
Yeah, I can put something together.
After we're finished, do you have?
Afterwards.
We have, we have those costs, we have those itemized.
Because at the time, they weren't available, so.
Just one thing before we break, I've been thinking about 2020 budget, about stormwater, following up the conversation we had with the road commission last week.
Well, we probably need a clarification of what exactly we're going to do. We talked about doing, notifying the road commission on new construction, and of, what was the second part of that? Oh, not in the mandating ordinance. So we need to take an action as a board, not today, but at a meeting directing the planning commission. I had that discussion to put on the agenda, so we can at least tell the public what happened.
You suspect that at your next board meeting, probably you have some input from the planning commission, because you think, you know, you're going to be referring, referring questions to the planning commission, I think formally you can't do that at your meeting on the 7th.
That's what I mean. Yeah, put it on the agenda.
From standpoint of 2020, with stormwater, we will probably be looking at expanding that budget with line items to, for instance, legal, and things such as that, that we don't currently have in that, in that budget, moving forward.
Okay, Dave?
Two things. First, I, at the planning commission meeting, day before yesterday, we, I did advise the planning commission that the board was going to be looking at that at their next meeting, and probably just sending it back to the planning commission per consideration as to requiring additional actions to be taken by the developer prior to issuing of the zoning compliance permit, and take a look at an ordinance that would allow the, the application of any charges by the county to go onto the tax roll. So they're just kind of waiting for board action on that.
Yeah, because we haven't met since then.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
So I had enough for the day.
So we'd like to have Kirk and Lois-
I have two.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, the other thing is, we've talked about it before, and it was, I forgot about it again. Never mind, press on, I'll interrupt you when I get to it.
Okay.
Senior moment.
All I was going to say was, to get some better numbers, we can include-
The three-month numbers?
Yes. Three-month numbers on all of the, all the departments.
All the guitar ones.
And-
He remembered.
Or whatever update on wastewater that we need. I guess that's going to depend on what those numbers are, we need those first. So I don't think we need to rerun the narrative or any of the numbers until we have, does that sound right, to have them, they don't need to change this?
Yeah, we're going to modify some of the, some of the narrative for additional data.
Yeah, to the, yeah, but not the number part of it. But then get the three-month breakout on all the departments, that's going to fuel what happens in wastewater next.
Yeah, so it would be basically water, wastewater, general fund, would be the three that would be affected by that.
Solid waste, too.
And then we can-
And solid waste, not so much, because solid waste is strictly building, strictly resident building.
Yeah. And that may change. They're pretty much going to ask for millage, so it's nothing we can do, other than vote yes or no. Go ahead, Dave.
The second thing that I couldn't remember was, we had talked before about the wastewater money that was loaned to the stormwater fund, and what that was, when it was going to be paid back, and how we're going to handle it.
Yeah, there is a formal action on that that the board took, and it was basically a 30-year payback.
But there is a year or two that we didn't pay anything, right?
No, the total, it said, it didn't set an annual payment, it said the total would be paid back to the stormwater fund within 30 years.
Wastewater.
So I've been very, I'm sorry, wastewater.
Stormwater fund or wastewater?
Solid waste.
Solid waste.
Yeah, and we're doing that, in fact, and I think in the 19 budget, I've got $5,000 that we might go back to solid waste.
Did we ever get that money back from that one project? We, we had to put in, I don't know, $26,000 for a, our matching project until that-
Oh, from the state, no, for the deep, the, the parks, basically, the, I don't think we've gotten that back yet.
Yeah, we borrowed that, that's right.
We haven't got that back, ever.
No, we've got, Lois is tracking that, that's it, that loan from solid waste fund that went to, I think it was Schwimwood, it was either Schwimwood or Lyons Field.
That was the last DWRF.
No, it hasn't come back yet.
Okay.
I haven't been reimbursed on that yet, I don't think we'll see that until, just before the fiscal end, state fiscal end comes.
There's this October, so that'd be next year. Isn't that October?
October, every year is, October is the end of year.
Yeah.
I think Dave's question, though, was the wastewater money that was put into the stormwater fund.
A hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars.
But actually, it's not-
Oh, way back there.
Actually, it's not that, it's actually, because me and Lois and Lynn, we looked it up, the actual number of dollars that's in there, that's really, we could use is $45,000. The rest is all deposits and other things that, it's not ours.
Some of that was used.
No, I'm not suggesting it's ours, like we're going to split it up and go for coffee. I'm suggesting that-
But that's what it is.
That it came out of one fund and went to another fund.
But only the 47,000 could go back. The rest was part of the expense of, of the process.
And we do have rationale when, when that was done, and it was done by board action, and we do have that. It was done in 2004.
As long as we've got rationale, that's all that counts.
I would give that to you, because I know I've got it-
We got it, because we went on a massive search for that, and we found it. So actually-
And I did locate the, the other one, with the loan for the water system, the loan from the solid waste fund was done by, by board, by the board has a policy that is recorded.
So we only have 47,000 in the stormwater fund that's really unrestricted. The rest is already spoken.
And that could be moved back.
Rest of deposits and interest.
So I mean, the board can decide what they want to do with that 47,000.
Now, I guess that was where this whole thing was headed, if we were supposed to make a decision on whether that was going to go back to the wastewater fund or-
Yeah, we had to know how much.
But I think that discussion's-
We're just going to write it off as a bad debt to stormwater fund.
No, I think that decision's going to be based on what the board would like to do with stormwater, because you could use that money to, if you decide to go another route, you've got money there for legal costs and other things that we're going to have.
Knew I had it.
I guess what I'm wondering is, and this is way back to my original question, is if stormwater, or if wastewater's an enterprise fund, and stormwater's an enterprise fund, how can we send stormwater funds over to waste, or wastewater funds over to stormwater to get them back?
You can't if it's a loan, you just can't use the money for something else. I mean, you can't use, you can't take the money to pay a bill.
No, I think the rationale at the time was, the rationale at the time was that stormwater was related to the wastewater.
Function of wastewater.
Was a function of wastewater, so they're kind of similar. That's what the board decided in 2004. So that's when they moved it. It's been there ever since, so.
Well, something that occurred to me, though, was, since there is a discussion about what we're going to be doing in the future, maybe a good use for that in stormwater would be, depending on what you, sort of agreements you come to, but actually, maybe come up with a plan for what you're going to do.
Yeah, we'll have to, because that was part of the-
Maybe like-
We talked about actually creating the utility and, and making it real. Whether that'll happen, I don't know.
Yeah, actually-
Well, that's definitely going to take some money.
Yeah, well, the discussion was to give an avenue for the road commission to give enforced their orders with regard to stormwater on our behalf.
Well, that's great, I mean, they've got an avenue right now, but I, it's not happening.
And so we might want to keep that money in there, too, and see if they can-
Take some of it out?
Well, I don't think, if we go the way of just creating an avenue for them to get their money back, that it costs us anything to do that. No, it shouldn't cost us anything.
Well, it'd be a little legal in creating the ordinance.
Well, the purpose, the purpose of the revision to the ordinance would be to provide them an opportunity to not have to go to the court to collect the formwork that they did, that would become responsibility of the property and of the taxes. So it shouldn't cost us really anything other than just the expense of having public hearing and publication for modifying the ordinance.
And it could come out of that fund.
Shouldn't, should it approach $45,000 or no?
No, I hope not.
You can look at this for a second, if you want, I'll get you a copy.
It'd be a constantly large public hearing.
Okay, so, we're just going to wait for the three months operating on all of the accounts, we'll get a clarification on water, and then at our next board meeting, we can set whatever future work sessions we want to finish it up.
We have one separate.
Do you have this?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else we need to worry about today? Are we good?
Amen.
Okay. Hey, right about on. 317.